I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. Our first order of business is our invocation. Reverend Victor Doherty is here. If you would come forward, please. And by the way, for you and for all others, make sure that the light is green when you come on and you speak directly into the microphone.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Doherty. I'm the Director of the Temple Buddhist Center located inside Unity Temple on the Plaza in Kansas City, Missouri. And so I want to thank everyone for inviting me and having me here this evening. I am truly honored. And I also want to acknowledge and honor everyone here for your leadership, for embracing diversity by having numerous members of the community in different denominations come and speak. That is true leadership. True leadership unites. And at the heart of leadership is something in the Buddhist practice that we call the heart of service. And that will be our blessing this evening is the heart of service practice. And so we begin by taking just a deep conscious breath together, holding for a moment and then releasing slowly. And I will sound a little bell, a bell of mindfulness. And so we go within, we open our hearts, and I have this blessing for our meeting this evening. May I become at all times, both now and forever, a protector for those without protection, a guide for those who have lost their way, a ship for those with oceans to travel, a bridge for those with rivers to cross, a sanctuary for those in danger, a lamp for those without light, and a place of refuge for those without shelter, and a servant to all in need. And I invite you to end this blessing, this prayer, with whatever is in your heart. May it be an namaste or an amen or whatever. And with that, we close the prayer. Namaste.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you would not mind joining me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to roll call. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson?
Next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to this evening's agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Oh.
Commissioner Carpenter, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
That brings us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any issues this evening? Seeing none. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests then an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on this evening's consent agenda. The first item is commission meeting minutes from July 19th, 2023, and Resolution 2023-282, approving ARPA funding request for a marine pump out project at Smithville Lake.
Thank you. If there are no comments on the consent agenda, I will be recognizing Commissioner Wagner for motion. Commissioner?
Thank you. Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. The first item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-281. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-281 is approving and accepting the attached letter of credit from Central Bank of Kansas City for a two-year developer maintenance of the roads and right-of-way for the Eastern Estates subdivision. Highway Administrator Griffin is here to provide some information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. Good evening, commissioners. This is a request, as the administrator said, to accept a letter of credit for Eastern Estates. It's a subdivision at the intersection of Eastern Road and Northeast 132nd Street. We're asking that, or we're letting you know that the developer has met all the criteria and the subdivision is ready for two-year developer maintenance. We're asking that you accept the letter of credit and put the subdivision under two-year developer maintenance.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-281? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-281.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-281. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
That brings us to the second and final item on our regular agenda, 2023-283. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-283 is the appointment of Kelly Kobelski to an unexpired term on the Children's Services Fund Board. The term is scheduled to expire December 31st, 2025.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-283? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-283.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-283. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
That brings us to our next order of business, which is discussion items. First item under discussion would be county website update demo, and that would be our administrator.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. So I will talk for a little bit while Mike Wilson makes his way to the podium to provide a demonstration for the commission and the public on our new website. We are not quite ready to launch it. The scheduled date is around September the 12th, but we wanted to give the commission a preview. It's certainly a composite of a significant amount of work from departments and offices all across the county to bring our website up to date and user-friendly, provide more services to our citizens, and also make sure that it has ability to be used on mobile devices. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Wilson of our communications and social media to do a demonstration.
Please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Mike Wilson, Digital Communications Coordinator for Clay County. As you can see, this has been a month-long project for us, still in the works, still putting some finishing touches on, but we want to make sure that we get everything right before we launch it officially. As county administrator mentioned, we have a tentative launch date right now of September 12th. But I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the features that we have on the new website. Right away, you can tell it's much more aesthetically appealing than what we currently have. We have the carousel banner that rotates through several of the images. Megan, our tourism and marketing director, did a lot of these pictures, make them look fantastic. One of the features that will carry over on every page are these six buttons that you see right here. I'm not going to kind of go through them all because there's still a work in progress, but I do want to highlight a few of them. The property taxes, that will link to the collector website. We do not take any payments directly through the claycountymo.gov website, so this will link to their page, make it easy for them to access. I'll pull it up over here, so you can see it's an external site. The agendas, meetings, and videos, we've been working with Civic Plus. They have a program Civic Clerk that ties in directly with this, makes it a lot easier to navigate. I'll highlight some of the features there. So for example, we'll take a look at last week's meeting. We've got the entirety on here that the public can access as well as through YouTube. One of the nicer features that it has is that we have the ability to bookmark meetings as they are going on. So if somebody is just looking for a specific item, they would just go to the time, they can just jump directly to that. It's bookmarked, just basically navigating through that. You can also find all the agenda packets, the agendas themselves, on the site here. Notify Me, this is one that we are working on right now, but once it is done, the public will be able to sign up for either email and/or text alerts. If anytime there's an agenda printed, if there's a new item on the news center, they'll be able to find that there. They can sign up for whatever they like, it's customizable. You only get notified for what you want to be notified about. Reporter Problem, that's another one that's also kind of in the workings right now, but it's, it's another one where if there's an issue that somebody has, whether it's highway, it's parks, if it's an accessibility issue, it's a simple form that you can fill out online. It'll be emailed directly to the appropriate agencies, whichever department that might be, and they'll handle the complaint. It's also got a time tracker on it, so that way we know if these complaints are being handled in a timely fashion. Unemployment, we all know, everybody is big looking for jobs. We're always hiring here for sure. This will link directly to our ADP, our job website. It'll list the positions that are available, and it'll also, yeah. And then parks, it's another, this will link outside, link to our Parks and Recreation page, which is one of our most visited pages. The camping and shelter reservations, for example, will link to an external page, because again, that's just another one that they use to, anything that needs to be collected through a fee will not be collected through the county website. But it's, it's a handy, it's, it's available. Some of the other features that I want to highlight, I'll go back to the homepage here. We have a nicer looking county news center, as you can see. This, we can again carousel through, just like we have the rotating images on the hero image at the top of the banner. So yes, you can, and if you want to get notifications anytime there's something new that's posted, you go right here, we've got the images. And we'll just make sure to keep that updated as often as we can. How we can help, this is one that we worked with a lot of departments to get through. Basically, we asked every department, what are some of the biggest questions you guys get every single day? What are the things that people are always asking for? I want to pay my real estate taxes. It's, it's another handy, quick link, so that way you don't have to go through pages upon pages to find what you're looking for. You can simply click a tab, if you're, okay, I need to register to vote, I can click here, it's going to take me to the election board. We've got the icons here for our social media pages on the bottom as well as on the top, and the header will carry through every page. To show you some of the internal pages that we have, of course, we know that transparency is big. We've made all of our budget and financial reports readily available. Clicking here will take you to the digital budget board, or digital budget book, excuse me. You can also see our financial reports, expenditures, salaries. We'll get a look at all of you here really quickly. Here's your pages along with your contact information. If the commission is interested, you can also, if the commissioners would be interested, you can write a bio, I'd be happy to post it. We've also kind of broken down everything into what if I'm a resident, what am I looking to do? If I'm a business, how can I register as a vendor? Or if I'm just in a community, how, what do I do if I want to get involved? That'll link to our boards and commissions, commissions pages. So that's just kind of a top-down overview of the new county website. Again, we are tentatively looking to launch on September 12th, but if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Very impressive. I appreciate the hard work that you've done. It's, you know, it looks very nice, and it also seems a lot more easily, easy to navigate, especially for someone like me who's not necessarily prolific. Commissioner Withington, I believe you're seeking recognition.
Yeah, no, this, this looks amazing. Hi, you did a really great job on this. Our current website's pretty embarrassing, so. I see the URL, the domain name's different. Is it going to, is that changing, or is it going to, is this just for the demo?
This is just for the demo.
Okay. And then, is the GIS math mixed? Because that's embarrassing too.
Yes.
So.
That is a page that's also a work in progress.
Are you working on that one?
They are working on it with assistance from, from myself and from Megan.
Okay. Whenever we have a discussion about that, I get a lot of ideas about the GIS, but no, this is, this is very impressive. Thank you for your work on that, and this, this looks a lot better. And Megan, your pictures look awesome too, so, yeah, thank you, everyone who was involved in this.
Thank you.
If I could just add a little bit about GIS, we'll talk a little bit about that in the budget process of how we're restructuring GIS and making it a county-wide department. So while what's out here may still be the same information that we currently have, that team is working diligently to enhance what we have coming out of GIS.
And then maybe even update in real time, so where we know what roads the highway department is actually planning on moving that year, and they can share the stats and put it on or something like that. So, yeah, this is awesome. Great, yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Well, I'll echo my colleague in thanking you and congratulating you for your hard work. It is quantum leaps ahead of where we were. In fact, my colleague here can substantiate, this has come up in conversations that we've had with other folks in the last couple of weeks, so you'll make a lot of folks happy real soon. My question is around what I think was on the government tab in the Code of Ordinances.
Yes.
I'm assuming that jumps to MuniCode?
Yes.
And so my question with that is, how updated are we on MuniCode?
That's a great lead-in. Actually, we are up to date.
Thank God.
As you all may recall, and I was hoping that we had briefed you on that, but there were about three years' worth of ordinance changes to the codebook that had not been done in digital format. We are current, except the current, I believe there are three ordinance that have been adopted in 2023 that are in process with MuniCode in the new supplemental 14. And so we will be updating the codebook every six months with any changes that are done to ordinances in the codebook. And we finally did get the front page changed, so it does list all of you as the elected officials versus, I think, last time I looked, it was like saying, I think Ed Quick was, you know, on the commission at the time. So some of those pages were a little outdated, but it is current now.
Well, I'll just say, I'm happy to hear that, and I'm glad I could serve you up a softball to answer, so thank you, and thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Wagner actually took my question away, so perfect. That's a great answer, I'm glad, and I thought that was the case. But more importantly, I just want to say thank you and congratulations, it's, it looks great. Thank you to everybody who had a hand in this, because there was a lot of work behind the scenes, so thank you very much, I think it looks good, I think it's kind of all part of our rebranding of Clay County, and this is perfect timing for this, so thank you.
It truly was a countywide effort. Every department put in a lot of effort into this, and so I just want to thank everyone who did contribute. I certainly played a role, but I'm just one person.
Teamwork makes a dream work.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, do you have anything to add before we close the discussion?
No, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your hard work and look forward to great things on our website and it continuing to approve, improve. That brings us to our second item under discussion, Substance Abuse Policy Update, and that is from Human Resources. Administrator?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce our Human Resources Director, Kim Callahan, who's going to talk a little bit about the update to the county Substance Abuse Plan. As the county is aware, last legislation, there were changes in the state of Missouri with regard to legalizing marijuana. And so that had us pause and take a look at our policies and how that would come into play in our operations and in our employment aspects. And so we felt like it was time to take a look at our policy, not only address those changes, but any other updates that we needed to do to the policy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Callahan to talk about the policy.
Please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. Okay, so you can see the amendment, and like Diana said, due to the recent passage of Amendment Three, which made it legal for those 21 and over to buy and use marijuana, that's when we have updated our policy. Right now, there's 23 states that have legalized recreational marijuana, and there's 38 states that have legally medical marijuana, have legalized medical marijuana. Except the federal government does not recognize the difference between medical and recreational use of cannabis right now. So there is one thing I want to point out on this policy, on page five, there is a typo that the, under the influence of alcohol, that should be point 000, not point 004. That was a typo, I wanted to point that out. So this is actually just reviewing and updating our policy. You know, it's more in-depth than what we had previous, previously, expels out a little more, the employee assistance, and we're getting ready to have, we're having training on September the 11th, we're bringing in an actual trainer, and we're going to have all our supervisors trained. We have two sessions as far as what to look for, especially now since marijuana is legalized. The one thing with medical marijuana that, according to a doctor from our clinic, there is no good test to detect if someone is currently under influence or timeline of use. So it's different than alcohol, you know, we can send someone to get tested, but there's no good test to say what influence they might, level they might be at. So that's one thing that we're looking at. And then I can tell you that everyone that I've checked with, all the other counties and cities, and even, let's see, the state of Missouri, Marian Bush, Bush Joyce, the HR Director for the state of Missouri, I contacted her, what's your updated policies? We're in the process of updating our policies. That's what I'm receiving from everyone, everybody's in the process of updating their policies. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have after you've reviewed this.
Thank you very much for, for putting that together, and I think we all appreciate the fact that Clay County gets to be kind of leading the way in some of these updated policies and even at this point, in advance of the state itself. So it doesn't hurt my feelings one little bit. Commissioner Withington, I believe you sought recognition?
Are we removing marijuana from pre, pre-employment drug testing?
At this time, we're not. We haven't made any changes, but we are constantly reviewing. Right now, we're looking at, you know, would, could we possibly lose federal funding if we take off THC? I have checked with other cities, there are a few cities that don't test for THC right now, or maybe they only do it for safety-sensitive jobs, so that's something that we're reviewing. Maybe we'll change it and only make it for safety-sensitive positions, and then that would, you know, it's still the same with CDL because that's federally mandated, so.
Yeah, so that's what I was getting at, because I know, I know not every position would be a safety-sensitive position. And, you know, I know Kansas City, they, they removed it, so I just didn't know if we were removing, I didn't see it, but I just wanted to clarify, so. Right, and we are reviewing that, we are, you know, we are reviewing it and, and seeing
if that's a possibility. I checked with drug testing last year, we spent almost $4,000, drug testing, pre-employment testing, and it would not change the cost.
Okay, that's what I was, that's, that's kind of what I was.
It's $60 right now when we do a drug test on a pre-employment application, and just to take one thing off the panel, it would not change the.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Commissioner Johnson?
So a couple of questions. You said on page five, the typo, point 0, it's supposed to be point 04, right?
000.
It's supposed to be point 00?
0.
So no 4 at all? Okay, so if it's greater than, it can't be equal to, so greater than 0.
Well, maybe that's, yeah, it needs to be, needs to be changed.
So that sense will need to be fixed, yeah. So anything, anything that's measurable is not, okay. Just a suggestion, I would put in there what that point 00 is measuring. Obviously, this is as a breath test they're talking about, but point 004, or point 000, what? There's actually a measurement that they're measuring, and that's kind of the legal side of me thinking about that, but, but put in what that measurement is actually measuring. And then also, when it comes to marijuana, although when it comes to testing, there is no, I mean, certainly any kind of urine test would show marijuana in the system, which doesn't mean they're under the influence, but you certainly can prove that someone is under the influence of marijuana when they come to work. And that's, does our Sheriff's Department have DREs, Drug Organization Experts?
Not on this.
No?
We're working on it.
You're working on it? So DREs are drug. You're working on it. So DREs or Drug Recognition Experts are usually law enforcement officers that are trained to determine if someone's under the influence of drugs. And there's seven different categories of drugs, marijuana being its own cannabis being its own category. And it could hold up in court that if they determine they're under the influence, then the court usually recognizes that based on signs and symptoms that they're under the influence. That might be an option to look into, but it would require an officer or a deputy who is a DRE to perform that evaluation on them. But if there's a situation where you think somebody's under the influence of marijuana at work and it's a problem, you could certainly have the leverage to, to have some determine, an expert determine if in fact they are.
Yeah. And I'll definitely be happy to work with Amy and the sheriff's department. Maybe we could work something out where, you know, even if they get tested, we could come to you and, and have someone take the.
If we're going to inquire of the captain, she needs to come forward so that she can be on the microphone and everybody can hear her comments.
Captain Amy Aggerian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. To clarify, we have had DREs in the past, but those people have moved on to different positions and some of them have retired. So they retain the skill, but they're not going to be able to testify or, you know, it's not going to hold up. The issue with training new DREs is that the program requirements have changed and it's just kind of been a struggle to get somebody to sponsor you to get into the program. So that's why I say when we're working on it, we do intend to have DREs trained. I just can't give you a timeline as to when it was going to happen. And as far as, so are you suggesting that, that maybe the sheriff's office would be, I guess, the investigator of a violation of this policy?
Well, my, my concern was that a lot of folks think that because marijuana just stays in the system, you can't prove that they're under the influence at the time they take a test that, okay, well, we're out of luck. We can't prove they're in influence. Well, actually you can.
Yes. Okay. I see where you're going. Yeah.
And so that's my, so, so I know the DRE program. So I actually proud to say that I actually brought the, I was the lead instructor that brought the DRE program to Missouri and to Kansas back in the early nineties.
Nice.
So I'm very familiar with the program and I know it's a big commitment to whoever wants to go through that program. But there are law enforcement officers, whether it's in the sheriff's department or other agencies around, that certainly have the expertise to determine if someone's under the influence. And hopefully we never need that. But if there's a situation where, hey, you know, this is a little bit more serious, we want to show this guy's going to fight this. We need to be able to prove that he was under the influence and a court recognized expert can certainly do that.
I have not been through the training myself, but I wonder if A-Ride training would give some additional ability for us to determine because while the DRE is, is great, but you're right, it is a big commitment. And right now we don't have anybody, but we have, most of our road patrol is currently A-Ride certified, or A-Ride trained, which is advanced roadside impairment detection. So I imagine that there's a component, but I don't know if it would be enough to do what you're, what you're suggesting here. And I mean, I'm sure we'll be happy to help out however we can.
Just being able to show impairment, I think is important. What a lot of people don't understand is that when it comes to marijuana, the dangers of marijuana is that once it goes in the system, it breaks down to two components. One of it is the feeling that makes them feel high or good. That goes away before the impairment side of it does. So people who don't think they're high anymore are still impaired. They may come to work thinking, oh, I'm not high, but they're still impaired and they're operating some heavy equipment. That's going to be a problem and we need to be able to show that, hey, they're still impaired. So that's my concern because it happens a lot. And as marijuana gets more and more popular and okay, and the levels of THC that are found in marijuana today, like I used to say, this isn't your, this isn't your grandma's marijuana anymore. This is, or it used to be 4%, you're talking, you know, well, 10 times that, well more than 10 times that. So it could be a real problem for the workforce, I think. So just some, just some thoughts, some comments. Obviously you guys know your stuff, but.
No, I appreciate that and we'll definitely check into that. And there, there was something I checked in the first month in February when it went, that was the first month that adult use cannabis was sold. And in the state of Missouri, 70 million was sold recreational marijuana and 30 million in medical. But knock on wood, we haven't had any issues, but we need, we need to have everything in line in case, you know, unfortunately we might. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner, for pointing out the difference between the sensation and the impairment. I think many of us did not realize that there were two very separate tracks. I appreciate you raising that point because that is the salient point is the impairment, not necessarily the sensation of high. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kim, thank you for the presentation and for looking at this issue. Obviously it's a thing we gotta, gotta address. You know, now that marijuana is legal in Missouri, in fact, it's a, you know, constitutional right of Missourians. Similar to alcohol, we're going to have to continue to regulate it on, you know, impairment grounds when it comes to doing things like operating heavy machinery, whether that's people's private use in their vehicles or other machinery or, you know, folks who are at work. One thing I would suggest is that in terms of how to go about, you know, folks who are in safety sensitive jobs, you know, this isn't, lots of states have already legalized marijuana and there are big employers in which those employers, you know, main focus is, is doing construction or other work with heavy machinery. And so I would just suggest that in terms of how to enforce, folks who might be under the influence, you know, certainly major corporate entities have had to be doing that for many years now in states where marijuana's legal. So that, you know, I don't have the exact answer for the best way to enforce, to do the enforcement side, but clearly we're going to have to do something. On the other side of things though, in terms of prohibiting, you know, employment via drug testing with marijuana, it seems like a pretty clear case to me that it's time to move away from that policy. I think in terms of whether or not we're allowed to do it, again, I don't think we're the first, you know, to cross that threshold. Kansas City's been mentioned. And again, in many states where marijuana has been legal for a number of years, lots of employers have, have dropped, you know, prohibiting employment based upon a positive THC test. So I think we definitely can do it. And I'm not a lawyer, but I think probably, probably we need to do it. You know, I think at some point it becomes an awkward situation to have a constitutional right be the reason that we would prohibit somebody from being an employee of the county. So my, my suggestion would be that we, that we do that as quickly as, you know, sort of logistically and legally possible, while also having to, of course, on the enforcement side of people who are impaired, obviously that can't be permitted. So.
Are you recommending just not testing for THC or just only drug testing for safety sensitive positions?
Yeah, I would say for any employment, prohibiting employment for, you know, based upon a THC positive test would be a mistake. You know, I think the distinction needs to be in the, in the same way that we wouldn't deny somebody employment for having alcohol in their system. I think the standard needs to be impairment. And if they're impaired at work, then that is where they might, you know, face termination. But I don't think we should deny anybody employment on those grounds.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah. Let me get this straight. So you're saying if, you're saying that say somebody comes in and they want to apply for a job, we're going to continue to do drug testing, right?
Well, it's what you decide. I mean.
I mean, they could have, they could have snorted a bunch of cocaine before they came in. So I think that we still need to be able to drug test. Now, say that they've got marijuana in their system in a, whatever the acceptable level would be, and we say, okay, you know, don't be doing this while you're working or whatever. But, but it's acceptable to take them as long as they aren't impaired. If they come in and they take a drug test and they're high on marijuana, then, then we shouldn't hire them, right? Even though it's legal, if you are impaired in some manner, when you come in to take the test, then, you know, what, what's our legal right? Can we then say, you know, any more than, alcohol's legal, but if they come in drunk, you're not going to hire them. So, you know, and when they're on, when they're working for us, I think about the guys out at the highway department as an example. And they're doing snow removal. They're driving these massive big machines that could take out a whole community and they're high. And then they should be out. There should be no two ways about it, right?
I can tell you the highway department, it's not going to change because that's federally mandated by the Department of Transportation. We can't change that. If they have their CDL, the guys at the highway department, they get randomly tested every quarter. And, and if they piss dirty, they get in trouble.
Okay. Good.
So what you're talking about, we do have people that are on mowers, you know, that aren't CDL drivers, that aren't under that random testing. But you don't have to worry about the highway department. That's, that's.
Well, really anybody. I don't mean just the highway department.
Yeah. And that's part of the supervisor training that we're going to do is to see what, what, you know, what happens to a person when they're under the influence and how we can see if someone's out there stumbling around or has the blurry eyes or, you know, is cleaning out the cabinets, eating the snacks. I'm, you know, I'm not making fun, but I'm just saying there are ways that we can see, you know, if someone's under the influence. And you're right, we don't want people out even driving our vehicles if, if they're under the influence of alcohol or marijuana, you know?
And you know that, I remember working at a different company and a gentleman came in and he'd, he'd had some illness. He had taken medication. And when he came into my office to talk to me, his eyes were kind of glazed and he was standing there weaving back and forth. And I said, have you taken a lot of medication this morning? Well, yeah, he had. We, we sent him home with pay, but, but he was impaired to a point. You didn't want him driving one of your vehicles around town and, you know, killing somebody. So I, I think that, that while we have to accept the fact that marijuana is legal, drinking is legal, you know, I, I have a little drinky now and again too, but I'm not going to be driving when I'm impaired. So we shouldn't, we should be monitoring our people closely and especially now with this being legal.
Right.
So, okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, let me see if I can make this happen to put you on. See if, there we are. I think you wanted to address the.
Yeah. No, I, I thank you for that. I just wanted to say absolutely, you know, impairment has to be, you know, fully monitored and, you know, punishment. It's the same thing that we've done with alcohol for all these decades. We, you know, got to do the same thing with marijuana. And to your point, I mean, you know, that there are certainly legal prescription drugs that cause even greater impairment. And so those too, if, if we've got folks who are, even if they're using legal prescription drugs and they're impaired at work, you know, obviously that's a problem too. And I think that's just, you know, I think employers, my understanding is, and this, you know, these protocols here just create standards by which management can identify that a person might be impaired and then begin the steps involved to, to address that. And so in terms of the, the initial application phase, yeah, I mean, if they're showing up to like the, the job interview and they're, you know, they're intoxicated at the job interview or something, of course, that is probably a good reason to not, to not hire them. But, but I'm talking about the, the tests, you know, we, we send our, our folks off to a, a testing place and they have to take the test. And what I would simply suggest is that, you know, illicit narcotics should of course disqualify somebody from employment. But marijuana is just no longer an illicit narcotic. It's a, you know, constitutional right at this point. And so I would suggest it makes a lot of sense to take it off at that stage while still enforcing impairment standards. And for how to best go about that, like I said, you know, lots of employers with heavy machinery components and, and legal states, you know, have had to deal with that for years. So there is advice out there, I'm sure, you know, standards. But yeah, thank you.
I think we can all agree with Commissioner Carpenter that showing up to a job interview under the influence would probably negatively impact the outcome for you. With that, Commissioner Johnson.
That's how I got this job. So just to clarify a couple of things, the challenges that we have with this marijuana thing is there is no test that shows if you're high or if you're impaired, except for the DRE, that the person who actually does a signs and symptoms test that determines it through their expertise. Unlike alcohol where you, you can blow a machine and you're over a legal limit, there's no such thing for marijuana. If you want to test for marijuana, it's either blood, urine, or you can even do a hair test. And depending on which test you choose, some of those dudes, some of those tests, marijuana stays in the system for a month. If you have a sensitive, a sensitive test and particularly the hair, if you have a sensitive one, it'd be several months that it's in the system. So let's say it's legally used and to Commissioner Carpenter's point, it's legally used. I use it, you know, when I go home and I don't really, but let's say I use it when I go home. And then I have a job interview in a couple of weeks, or I haven't used it for a couple of weeks, but if I have a drug test, it's going to show that I have marijuana in my system, which according to our constitution now is legal. So that's where the conundrum comes in. It's like, well, can we, we can't really do anything about that because illegally use marijuana. The only thing we can do is if, like was mentioned, if we could show, hey, you know, he's, he's at this interview or he's on the job under the influence. And that's much more difficult to do because there's no test that shows that, except for the expert that knows how to determine that. So that's really the big challenge that we have and that everybody has with this. Cause I guarantee a lot of employees that come in and apply are going to, it depends on what test we use, they're going to show a positive. They're going to show that there is some marijuana THC in the system. And just because there is, we can't do anything about that. So obviously you know, we have to kind of formulate a policy that's going to figure that out. So good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. I, I just thought I would just offer that in my day job, we deal with children, we deal with people who, and some, sometimes it is the worst day of their lives. And when we hire new individuals, we do test and we tell those individuals who want to be hired with us, you are going to be tested and if, if the drug tested and if the test is negative, or excuse me, positive, you will not be hired here. And I just throw that example out just to suggest, you know, we generally do run to the idea of heavy machinery, one of those areas that we do not want people under any influence to come into contact with. But I also just offer through my own example, that I do not know that that is the only place. And I guess I would just simply ask, ask you and ask the departments, you know, to take that inventory of where an issue may come and to speak to whether or not it is wise to be able to use that testing as a filter at the beginning. I, I do understand that part of the reason why we, we have this is because in a society that likes to incarcerate individuals, that this is one means, for those that have been through incarceration, this provides a tougher way to get back into the job market. I get that. But I also believe that in some respects, we have a little bit of a higher standard. Whatever, however we intend to define it, and I just know from our own experience, where I was at from nine to five today, we have a higher standard for particular reasons and no one seems to bat an eye for it. And so I'll just throw off those comments to the extent that they can be, be helpful. Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing that I think I'd like to point out is that these, did you need to comment on something that was just said? Captain, please proceed.
I just wanted to, to mention that I double checked on this and our current policy for the sheriff's office requires that if a person is taking medication that causes impairment, they're required to tell their supervisor. So I have not actually read this policy that we're discussing, but that could put it back on the employee to, you know, make their supervisor aware. I think it offers us some, some protection as a county.
Yeah, that's in there also.
Okay. And I, like I said, I just hadn't seen it.
Is that what you're talking about? A legal prescription?
A legal prescription, but are we going to extend it? Since I agree with you, it's the impairment that's the issue when we're talking about legal substances. So why, why not treat it the same way that we're treating medication that's taken as prescribed? So if I'm taking, I mean, honestly, if you're taking any kind of pain medication that's going to cause impairment, you shouldn't be driving a county vehicle. You shouldn't be, maybe even be coming to work. So there you go. I don't know. But like I said, I hadn't seen the policy.
And that, one of the other reasons of, of putting this policy in place, apart from obviously providing some clarity to our employees as far as what is and is not acceptable and what the circumstances would, would be created by that. My, my gut feeling is that having this policy in place. policy in place might give us some degree of legal protection from lawsuits. So, if someone were on the job impaired and there was some unfortunate incident, we would have at least be able to say, we have policies in place to try to prevent those kinds of circumstances from coming up. So, another reason why it's important that we put this in place, I believe, is to protect the liability position of the county, not to be too cold-blooded about it, but that's something that we have the responsibility to do. I think what I'd like to do, I'll go to Commissioner Withington here in a moment, but what I want to do is, Administrator, as we start rounding off this discussion, I want to know what it is you would like from us so you can specifically go forward. Go ahead and think that through just a little bit. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Commissioner Withington. If he is our last commentator, then I would like to get that from you and then get consensus from the commission on the way that we would proceed. So, with that, Commissioner Withington.
Hey, I'm just curious. So, we're talking about impairment. You know, I'm, I struggle with anxiety and I have to take Xanax before I come here sometimes. I have really bad social anxiety. I know I know you guys, but I hate public speaking. So, how do you guys treat that? Because, you know, it doesn't affect, sometimes it makes me drowsy. So, if somebody's on the job site and they take a Xanax or something to, because they're having a really bad anxiety, they're feeling anxious or whatever, how do you guys treat that? Like, I don't want somebody to not have a job because they have anxiety or something and have to take a prescription to control it. Sometimes it's worse than others, you know, some, like, I'm fine right now, but sometimes I get really drowsy if I take it.
Okay. I've read this thing a million times here. It does say in here that if you're impaired, even with the legal prescription, you know, the supervisor then could talk to you, bring you in their office. If you're not able to do your job, you should go home and take a sick day.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want you to drive if we thought you were impaired. And I understand having to take a legal prescription for, but if you're not able to do your job that day, it's understandable to go home and take a sick day. I mean...
I just don't want there to be any retaliation or anything like that, you know? Because, you know, it doesn't always impair you, but sometimes it can knock you out. And, you know, I just want to make sure that those people are being looked out for because, you know, there's a lot of people that probably struggle with anxiety and stuff that doesn't, don't want to tell you because of the stigma attached to it, right?
Right.
So, I just want to make sure that those people, because that's something I'm passionate about, I want to make sure those people are taken care of.
And I do appreciate that, and that will be part of this training for our supervisors to understand, you know, if there is a legal prescription and we have to send one home, no, they're not going to be written up and something put in their file. This is, you know, things, right now, stress is so high right now for all the employees and we've got some good stuff coming up I can't talk about yet. But with, anyway, I don't want to put it out there until it's for sure, but it's really, we understand that stress levels right now for our employees is through the roof for different reasons. There's divorces, paying their bills, you know? So, we certainly understand and would be compassionate to an employee like you're talking.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Withington, for bringing that up because the fact is, a medication, a given medication affects different people differently and even the same person, depending on whether they've just eaten, a variety of circumstances. So, I think that helps us focus.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, and I appreciate Commissioner Withington's willingness to share that kind of thing and have some soul for people that maybe share that malady. But I think that as we go forward, that if, like yourself, you're in an office position, you're not going to, you know, do anything that could harm yourself or somebody else. And I go back to somebody who's driving heavy equipment or somebody out at the lake, say, that, you know, is cutting grass or whatever. I think it has to be a common sense decision in that you look at what the person's position is, whether an impairment for a regular legal drug use could cause harm. If that's the case, then maybe you give that person a job inside. If it's somebody that can work outside and it's no big deal, then go for it. But I think that we have to be cautious in a situation like that because we open ourselves up for lawsuit, for them hurting somebody else. And as long as they can perform their job and take the medication, then I think that's only fair that we protect them and their, you know, whatever their problem is.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, just caution in our positioning people.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, Administrator, would you like to share with us what you would like from us to go forward in the form of a consensus?
So, great discussion, not unlike many discussions that the leadership team has had around the table, talking about this particular policy. So, several things came up that I want to touch base on. So, we certainly want the policy to protect our employees' rights to privacy and protect those. And as Commissioner Nolte and Commissioner Withington said, you know, you could get a new prescription, you know, that you take and come to work and have no idea how you're going to be impacted by that. So, our first priority is making sure that the employee is safe and that their colleagues are safe and that the public is safe. And so, and I certainly want to say if someone came and started acting unusual and they were having a reaction to a prescription, you know, supervisors would talk, that's why the training is so important. And certainly I want to reiterate, we're not going to say, go home and let them drive off, right? We're going to make sure they get home safely because that certainly is something we would not want to do is we notice they're impaired and send them home and want them on the street. So, we want to make sure we take care of them from that perspective. I think those things are sort of in place already and have been in place on how the county operates, but it's a good time to look at the policy and do training. We've got new supervisors and so it's always good to bring that training in of what are those indicators that you should be observing to see, are they impaired from their behavior? And not jump to conclusions, let's have a conversation about why that's happening. I think the challenge for us, and I think Commissioner Johnson, you know, identified it, is if someone is impaired because of marijuana, marijuana, that's a hard one for us to actually prove because it's not like alcohol. And so, really, what we want to say to our employees, whether it is a legal drug or an illegal drug, we don't want you coming to work under the influence of whatever that is. The challenge for us is what do we do with employment, pre-employment testing? So, there's a couple of things, when it's, do we do it for safety sensitive only, for everything, including marijuana? Because as Kim has mentioned, you know, those employees of ours that drive large equipment have CDL license. So, they're required under certain guidelines under the federal government that they're going to be tested. And marijuana, I believe, is part of that panel that we're required to test. My understanding is, a conversation that we've had with the HR from the sheriff's department is they're not wanting to change their hiring practices and they also still want to continue to test pre-employment for that. The other thing that we are looking at is, because we also get federal funding, we get federal grants. And while this may be legal in the state of Missouri, it is not recognized from the federal government. And so, when we take federal money, there is a whole slew of things that we have to abide by and policies we have to adhere to, including, you know, a drug-free workplace in many times. And that could be because we got a grant for parks, which is not necessarily a safety sensitive, or maybe not, equipment that we wouldn't normally test in pre-employment. So, we're trying to work through those components of how do we roll this out, especially from the pre-employment aspect of it. We certainly don't want to penalize applicants, the challenges, as Commissioner Johnson said, you know, I don't know much about this, but, you know, I may have had a gummy on Saturday and then I come in and I have my pre-employment test on Monday. I'm not under the influence, but it's still in my system, you know? And that's what we're trying to balance, to be fair to those applicants. It's going to, I think, you know, legal is working side by side with this on how we figure that out. So, we're going to do the training because it is in our workplace, could be in our workplace now, so we are doing that. We're going to continue to fine-tune the policy, especially what I hear from the commission about what do we do, especially about pre-employment testing. The impairment piece of it is training and observing behaviors and working with employees if they are under the influence of whatever it is. But the challenge, I think, that we still have to finalize is what are we doing for pre-employment? And I don't have an answer on that yet.
Because you are somewhat under a schedule here, are you just basically looking for us to say, yeah, you're on the right track with this and to go forward? Or are you seeking, I want to make sure that when you come out of here this evening, you have what you need to go forward?
Well, I...
Or was this just an informational thing?
It's really an informational, kind of hear from the commissioners, your thoughts on this particular item. And so, I've heard, you know, a little bit of, you know, maybe not pre-employment, except for those positions that are safety sensitive or that we tie to a specific purpose. You know, Commissioner Wagner certainly understands, you know, juvenile, you know, we have a lot of our employees working with juvenile. And so, you know, is that to a higher standard? Is it safety sensitive? Not when you think of riding equipment or carrying a gun, but it does play a very important role. And so, we have to balance that. We're continuing to work with, as Kim said, states, cities, counties. We have reached out to other states that have had this in place for a while, Colorado, obviously. So, we're talking to those public entities and how are they addressing it and what's in their policies? Because they've had this in place for several years and how are they seeing that work versus Missouri? This is still fairly new to us.
Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you were seeking recognition?
Thank you, yeah. Just a few thoughts. First, as sort of a compromise, I think maybe just taking the first step of only applying the pre-employment new standard to jobs that aren't safety sensitive jobs might be, make sense as a first step. And, you know, we can see how that goes and what lessons we learn from it before we consider expanding it beyond that. Obviously, to the extent that the federal government for a CDL, you know, mandates the full panel, including THC, then obviously we have to continue doing that. I will observe that just in the last week, there has been some movement at the federal level. Marijuana is a Schedule I drug, has been for many decades. My understanding is it's imminently headed to become a Schedule III drug, which I don't know for sure that that would impact the CDL drug testing conversation or not. I suspect it probably will. Hasn't happened yet, but I do think that it's coming. And so, perhaps we, after that happens down the line, we could revisit for those safety sensitive jobs. But I certainly think that for the rest of employment, it would make a lot of sense to not prohibit employment based on the pre-employment drug testing for THC. Again, it's, at this point, a constitutional right and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me for those jobs to prohibit employment for that reason. So, I would perhaps suggest that as a first step would be my idea.
And if I could, and Kim, you could address this, because I believe when we send for pre-employment and they do the testing panel, we don't get information back about what other than it's a positive or a negative. Is that correct?
No, I talked to them and they changed it.
Okay.
So, now we are receiving a test that shows, you know, every drug that we test for, the cocaine, the PCP, the amphetamines, it's a five-panel test and it would show marijuana. It does show what it's positive for now.
Does it show other legal substances?
No.
Such as, somebody's on a prescription painkiller?
Okay, if that's the case, they have an MR, a medical review officer, that calls them directly and says, what do you have a prescription R? What do you, and they send it on to a lab and they investigate that. We don't know about that, but they send back to us whether it's a positive or negative. But if there is another drug that's in their system, they are contacted. They don't let us know. Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah. So, if they test positive for a legally prescribed drug, then it goes to a medical review officer who contacts the applicant directly and basically says, you know, provide information that this is your prescription to be on. And if they can prove that it is their prescription, they're taking it legally, then what comes back to the county is it's a negative. Because they're legally taking a drug that they're entitled to do.
And I assume that has to do with HIPAA considerations?
Right.
Okay.
So, how is the testing company dealing with marijuana?
I'm sorry?
How are they dealing with marijuana?
Who?
The testing, so you said right now, if you have a legal prescription, there's a separate process and when it comes back to us, it's a, it'll come back as a negative if they met that process. Are they using that same process for marijuana, which is now arguably a legal drug?
No, they don't contact, let's see, if they test positive for marijuana, it would come back to us positive and it would show marijuana.
Okay.
Or, you know, it lists the panel of drugs that they're tested for and it would show positive next to what the...
And understand that from our perspective, or at least my perspective, the mere fact that somebody has a positive for marijuana does not necessarily equal that they don't get a job. Those are two different things. You may have a positive and you may still be applying for a position where that's going to be okay, to have that particular drug in your system. Impairment is completely different and impaired is always impaired and that's always going to be a problem. But the mere fact that they might show positive for a drug that is not an automatic disqualifier for the job they're applying for, you know, we would likely would still hire them if they met everything else.
Commissioner Wagner.
Oh, thank you. I think at the end of the day, this is a risk management document, right? This is the only reason why we're having this discussion is dealing with potential risk that may lead to something that's catastrophic. The comments just a few moments ago about CDL, for example, there's at least some recognition that a catastrophic event that could occur could mean substantial damage to property, substantial damage to life, right? Someone could potentially die as a result of that, whether it's our employee or someone from the general public. And I think that is how I'm looking at this, is how do we deal with risk for the county in the case something catastrophic occurs? Since, as we've talked about, there's no real easy way to tell if on a daily basis someone, you know, may be impaired or not, then it occurs to me that being able at the front end to discover if someone walking in potentially impaired and if a test shows that they are, when they're seeking employment, that may suggest that down the line, you now run the risk that that person can be impaired and thus create a catastrophic event. So, I am certainly open to the notion that we can do things a little bit differently depending upon the job that they have. And I guess what I would, my direction, whatever direction I would give, is just simply to say, we should review what a catastrophic event can be in that job description that if something were to occur, you have now opened up the county to a great deal of risks. And by risk, I mean, we're going to shell out a lot of money. That's pretty simple to see when it comes to heavy equipment. But I also, just by using the example I used earlier for myself, that may not be the only one. And it may not be what one may consider something that is just simply for heavy equipment. Perhaps there's something else out there. And so, I would just advise, you know, there's a saying that perfect is the enemy of the good. So, I don't mean that you need to be perfect, but what I do think is, at the very least, we are managing our risk so that if there is an issue that comes down the line, we can point to this policy and say, we have done what is reasonable to protect ourselves and the public from a potential catastrophic occurrence. And I'll just leave it at that, if that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, could you go ahead and hit your mic again? I must have hit the button twice.
There you are. Okay. Don't mean to belabor this, but have we ever looked at the option of, the option and the legality of not allowing employees to use marijuana recreationally? You know, I know there's a lot of, it's more restrictive than what the constitution allows, but that happens all the time in employment. And to give you an example, where I came from, we didn't allow employees to have beers, we didn't allow them to have tattoos, we didn't allow them to smoke, didn't allow them to chew tobacco. Obviously, we couldn't monitor all that stuff. Obviously, we couldn't monitor all that stuff off, we didn't allow them to smoke marijuana either recreationally. We couldn't monitor all that off-duty, but we could certainly test for it. And if they ever tested positive for marijuana, unless they had a, a prescription for that, they weren't allowed to test positive ever for marijuana. And I didn't know if that's a, an option that we even looked at here, because I know there are some places that do that, I don't know in Missouri, I know other, but I just pulled up a couple of policies of some other cities where they just outright banned the use of marijuana. So, have we looked at that? Is that a possibility?
I, I don't think it is. I think the constitution that we passed in the state does give some employment rights that would prohibit an employer from just banning the use of marijuana for its employees.
So, will this apply to our sheriff's department as well? The sheriffs can use marijuana off-duty?
I have not seen anything that tells me that that, that there was an exemption for law enforcement, and I think so. I think we're coming back to the idea of impairment as opposed to just use. Now, I think you can make a better, I can make a better argument, I think, for someone who's overseeing prisoners in a jail or who is a sworn deputy on the road. I could certainly make a better argument that the public good and need for a drug-free deputy outweighs that deputy's interest in, liberty interest in using marijuana. I can make a much better argument for that.
So, so as a government agency, are we not allowed to make laws, orders, is there more restrictive than the state's?
Not in a constitutional setting, not, not with the con- the constitution gives employees' rights and we can't take those rights away.
Okay. All right. Just thought, something we should look at. I've been binge-watching Suits, so I've been looking a lot, a lot of Law and Order.
Maybe you could pass an ordinance that it's not legal in Clay County, I don't know.
Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you sought recognition?
Thank you, yeah. No, I just wanted to, I hate to task our county council with, he works very hard for the county, with, with extra work, but Commissioner Wagner brought up, you know, some hypothetical about that if we had a policy in place that didn't prohibit employment for a, a pre-employment THC test, that that would expose us to greater liability if that person then went on to, you know, caused some harm to someone. You know, I think this is the kind of thing where it can be examined, you know? We've had a number of states, Colorado's been almost a decade now, a number of states have been in the five to 10-year range. And we have also local entities like Kansas City that have implemented this policy. So, you know, I would be curious to, to, to see if there is indeed any, you know, grounds by which to, to say that we would be at higher risk for lawsuits if we were to have a pre-employment policy that simply said that we're not going to prohibit employment for a positive THC test. Strongly suspect that I know the answer to that question, but if, you know, if that is a thing that could be looked into, maybe it would be helpful to alleviate some, some Yeah, you know, like, I'll just once again suggest that I think compromised position to me is to, to apply this to non-safety-sensitive jobs and not prohibit employment on those grounds. And so that, you know, in terms of looking for consensus, that's what I would recommend that, that we do.
Any further discussion before we conclude this subject? Seeing none, thank you very much. I think it was very enlightening and we appreciate the time that was put in to construct this, this policy, so we appreciate, we appreciate your, your good work. That brings us to number 10, which is reports, I believe. We have one report that has been submitted, Administrator?
Yes, thank you. As part of the annual process for the county auditor's office, they historically will do a capital asset inventory. And what you have before you include it in your packet is the Auditor's 2023 Asset Inventory. And obviously, we have a number of assets throughout the county. And this year, the four largest departments were selected and the assets were selected by the auditor's office, and they actually go into the field and actually physically see the assets. And I believe, if I remember the report correctly, all the assets were found. So, great report and time by the auditor's office and great by our staff locating all of the assets. And so, that's there, and I'm sure if you have any questions, the auditor would be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. And all commissioners, I assume, have their copies of that report? If not, I'll certainly reach out to the Administrator. That brings us to County Administrator comments. Administrator, you're on again.
Just briefly, first of all, is to remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Monday, September the 4th, in observance of Labor Day. And also then, the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 7th, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Very good. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, if you'd like to lead off?
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
Yeah, so, it's no secret how passionate I am about Clay County and Kansas City sports and Major League Baseball. I think everybody up here and in this room knows that. Over the last week or so, I think I've become public enemy number one by the hell no to the Royals group for Kansas City. So, I just want, I don't know if this is the correct place to say it, but I'm just going to say it anyway. Yes, I do work for J.E. Dunn. I've been there for three months now. Yes, J.E. Dunn is a minority owner in the Kansas City Royals. J.E. Dunn is a private company. They do have employee stock ownership. You have to be with J.E. Dunn for a year to own, have ownership in the company. Like I said, I've been there three months, I'm in the IT department. I have zero ownership in J.E. Dunn. So, I have checked with our county counselor, I have checked with some other friends of mine who are attorneys, they have all told me that there is zero conflict of interest. I think if anybody were to ask it of the other commissioners that sit up here, I have said multiple times that if it was a bad deal, we should just get up and walk away from the table, that the number one thing with this whole process for me is to make sure that the citizens in the county are protected. I honestly also believe that I'm working against the interest of my employer who would prefer, I've not had any discussions with them, but I believe that they would prefer to have the Royals in the East Village. So, I just want to publicly say, yes, I do work for J.E. Dunn. I've been there for three months. I have no ownership in the company and our county attorney and others have told me there is no conflict of interest. And at the end of the day, doing what's right for this county and the citizens is more important than having the Royals in Clay County.
Commissioner Lawson?
Good to know. Put that at rest. No, I, I, I think that's probably a smart thing to have done, said. I admire you for it. I, I, as, I like, I'd love to see the Royals come, but I think all of us here, our first responsibility here to the citizens of Clay County. And we're going to do what's best for them. And in the end, they will be the ones that will vote and say, "We can or we can't." Our job, as I see it, is to get the best deal we can get, let the citizens know all of the facts and figures, and then they go out and do what they do best and vote. And hopefully, they go out in droves and vote whichever way they want to. Whatever they decide, we will all live with it, we'll be happy about it, and we'll go forward and continue to do the best we can for the county. So, thank you, and we're all behind you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I, I do want to join my colleague in supporting Commissioner Withington. It is, you know, sometimes people can't tell dates on a calendar. It seems to me we were talking about this before he went to his current employer. And I'm quite confident that wherever this goes with the Royals and, and if we are, if we have the opportunity to bring it in front of our voters, that vote will not live or die by who currently employs our colleague. It will live or die by the value of the deal that we bring before it. And so, as the saying goes, you got to earn your dinner some way. And I believe our colleague has a right to earn his dinner. And I think people should let him do that and leave it be. The other comment is simply, it's Labor Day weekend, don't do anything silly. As we were talking about risk just a few moments ago, come back home so you can go back to work on Tuesday. But in all seriousness, enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Hopefully, it won't be too hot. We'll see. We'll see. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments you'd care to make?
Thank you, Commissioner. No, just want to wish everybody a happy Labor Day weekend as well and look forward to a brief meeting one week from today.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson? Yes, sir. Two things. First of all, I want to say how much I appreciate this capital assets inventory. A lot of people don't realize how important this is. We just gloss over it unless it's bad. I worked for a city where it was bad, we were missing 50 shotguns one time. Couldn't account for 50 shotguns, and that made the news, and it was ugly. So, this capital assets inventory and the fact that it was such a, a positive one, I really appreciate that. I think that's good. It means we're, we're doing, you are doing what you need to be doing and tracking those things. The second thing, just anecdotally, it was kind of funny this morning, or this afternoon, right before we walked in here, a comment that was made about the diversity that we have on this, on this council, on this commission. This morning, I went for a ride on my horse through the trails in my backyard. It was beautiful, just me and my horse, I loved it. Had a conversation with Joanne about her riding a horse this morning as well and talking about a horse she's looking to buy. Her and I were in the hallway with this conversation and a Commissioners Wagner and Carpenter, a couple of city slickers, walked up and talked about how different it is on their side of town, from our side of town. And one of them commented about the diversity we have on this commission. And it really is. I mean, there's, and you know, I'm in the country. Commissioner Lawson's in the country. You got, like I said, a couple of city slickers here, but we have, I think, some good representation in that regard of our, of our county. I just thought it was a, when he mentioned that, I thought, you know what, that, that really is some, some good, good representations. I appreciate that comment, thought I'd share that with you.
I just want to say, I, I regret the comments made by Commissioner Wagner. If I'm going to take silly off my agenda this weekend, I'm afraid I'm going to have a lot of time on my hands. The, the county participates in the Zoo Taxing District, and that means that ourselves in Jackson County put money into the Kansas City Zoo. And just recently, we had the opening for, in fact, it was just the other day, the new aquarium that will be opening tomorrow. That is something that I would encourage everybody in Clay County to visit when they have the opportunity. I would remind them that part of the perk of being with the taxing district is that Clay County residents get, get certificates mailed to them, coupons mailed to them that allow them free access to the zoo. And I would encourage anyone to do so, to see this, this great new exhibit. It's really a fascinating thing. It's certainly world-class, which is what the point behind the Zoo Taxing District was, was to produce a world-class zoo, and now it is a world-class zoo slash aquarium. It is, it's just, it's magnificent, so please treat yourself to that and also have a good and safe, and maybe a little bit silly, holiday weekend. That brings us to executive sessions. We are noticed up under one item. Is there a motion related to our executive sessions? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I move to go into executive session under the Vice Statutes of Missouri's 610.021/12 as it deals with contractual matters and to adjourn from there.
Motion's been made that this, this body go into executive session under contractual, which is Missouri Statute 610.021 (12), and adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we are, we are going into executive and then adjourn.